Okay, good evening, everyone. Apologize for starting a few minutes late, but thank you for being here. We're gonna reconvene our open session, and I'd like to ask trustee Lang to report out actions taken in closed session.
Yes, thank you, President Jamal. There were three items on which there was action taken in closed session. On a seven to zero vote, the board approved a reduction of two and a half hours per week for the period of August 21st through December 14th, 2017, to a classified employee at Saddleback College. On a seven to zero vote, the board approved a three-month unpaid leave with benefits to a district services classified employee. And finally, on a seven to zero vote, the board approved the chancellor's authorization to pay the supplemental retirement plan benefit to a beneficiary of a classified employee at Saddleback College. Those were the actions taken in closed session.
Thank you very much, trustee Lang. Now, I'd like to ask trustee Milchiker to lead us in the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance by trustee Prendergast.
Today, millions of people across the United States gathered to witness the solar eclipse. This was an opportunity to learn about science, math, celestial wonders, geography, history, and more. The event summoned students of all ages. It brought together people from all walks of life with varying beliefs to take part in something greater than themselves. As we relish the awe of today's eclipse, let us also reflect upon our purpose and renew our commitment to educate and inspire all students. Today, we welcome new and returning students to our campuses for the fall semester. Let us be a guiding light for their dreams.
Okay, please join me in saluting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And I see that we have one request for a public comment, and that's from Claire Cesario.
So, I am here, and I'm gonna speak on behalf of some of my colleagues who are both present and not present. So Carmen Mata Hernandez Bravo told me I had to also speak on her behalf, so hence the hat. So I'm here to encourage adoption of AB 1887, restricting district funds from being spent on travel to states that discriminate against the LGBT community. And I think it's crucial, especially in this day and age, with the rise of hate and hate crimes that are happening around the world, that we, especially in this country, that we oppose hate in all its forms. And I think this is a step in the right direction, and so I hope that you do pass that resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Claire. All right, any other requests for public comments? Oh, alrighty. We'll now turn to our board reports, and I will start with trustee Milchiker.
Well, I want to welcome all the faculty and staff and administrators and students back. As you know, today's the first day of classes, and many people have been working very hard to get ready for today, for the first day of classes, and very excited about it. This past week, I attended the professional development week at Saddleback and Irvine Valley College, and I'm looking at my time to make sure I stay in time. And it was very, very instructive. I really enjoyed it, and I learned that the professors and the staff are really working hard to make sure all the students have the wonderful experience I talked about in my invocation. We, the chancellor and the two college presidents gave very, very interesting and informative presentations to their colleges and to the college district community. We also listened to all four of the presidential finalists, candidate finalists for Saddleback College president, and they had a forum with all of the college communities. And we learned that the committee that forwarded these people did a fabulous job, because there were four very, very excellent candidates for Saddleback College president. And the other thing that was very gratifying is that all four of them really want to come and be our president. They all said wonderful things about Saddleback College, and we love hearing it even though we know it's true. I attended many, many other sessions, including the Faculty Association luncheon and a number of other sessions, Irvine Valley College Classified Senate Meeting, and a number of other smaller sessions, like Five Strategies for Building Effective Teams, Creating SLOs, Building Grit in Our Students, my favorite apps, TED Talks in the Classroom, Plans of Our Local Hiking Trails, as a biologist, I love that one, Common Assessment Initiative, The Geek Report, another favorite. And all in all, it was just very informative and very an excellent meeting, and I know we're off to a very good start for all of our students, so thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, hello, everyone. My comments will also be in the same general theme. Certainly a busy and exciting time at our district. I did manage to attend three events last week, including the chancellor's opening session, Saddleback College interim president's opening session, and faculty breakfast, and the Saddleback part-time faculty luncheon, and enjoyed catching up with a number of acquaintances at all these events, and enjoyed all the presenters, and thought it was just a great kickoff to another school year. I know that I speak for the entire board in expressing my appreciation for all of the community's support of our colleges and joy, and wish all of our students the best of success for the academic year ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Lang. Trustee Wright.
My comments are going to be along the same lines that we've already heard, but I did want to talk about, my wife and I were able to attend on Friday, July 21st, we attended Music Man at Saddleback College, put on by the Department of Theater Arts, outside on the upper campus quad. It was a wonderful experience being there. For example, the Orange County hotline, our hot list recently ranked the summer theater at Saddleback College as being number six, best festival in Orange County, being out a number of other events. I thought that was wonderful. I did attend a number of events during the in-service, or what we call Professional Development Week. I attended the IVC president's opening session at the Reforming Arts Center, wonderful. In fact, I really enjoyed their guest speaker. He was talking about managing the millennials, which is an issue. On Tuesday, I attended the chancellor's opening session, held at McKinney Theater in Saddleback, where our chancellor, our interim chancellor, really did a wonderful job, talking about the upcoming school year, some of the challenges that we will face. On Wednesday, I attended the president's opening session and faculty breakfast at Saddleback College, and I want to applaud the acting president for her presentation regarding what they're going to do as far as accreditation, and also addressing some of the enrollment management challenges that they face. Finally, I just wanted to thank our board president, Tim Jamal, our interim chancellor, Deborah Fitzsimmons, our president at Saddleback College, Denise Whitaker, and our president at IVC, on their statement of unity against racism, bigotry, and violence. I thought that was well done. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Wright. In similar vein, I did attend the opening session at IVC with the president's opening session, had a chance to speak there, and I appreciate that. Chancellor's opening session, the Saddleback part-time faculty lunch, couldn't attend everything, but what a great start to the fall semester, so many positive things, lots of great energy. That's what we like to see as a board, and I'm sure you like to see that, being part of this community. Did attend all four presidents' public forums last week, and I think we've got four strong candidates, and I think good progress will be made over the next few weeks, and hopefully there'll be a leader in place that everyone's gonna embrace and is gonna do great things. In a similar vein, I thank you, trustee Wright, for echoing the, for commenting on the statement that was made by the four of us, I think, last week. I know I mentioned at the IVC opening session, my remarks, which I actually didn't really feel really difficult to make, to be honest with you. I don't know why some people struggle with making statements against hate and bigotry and racism, and calling out groups like the KKK, white supremacists, and other groups that incite, are trying to incite violence on the basis of hatred and bigotry. I don't know why it's so difficult to do that. I don't know why it's partisan. I don't understand it. You know, we have over 50,000 students and come through this district every year of all walks and dominations, and we're here to educate, regardless of where they come from, and where their ethnicity is, their background, political affiliation, and, you know, that's what we're all about. And to come out against hatred and bigotry and racism, and the KKK and white supremacist groups, I posted something on my social media, and everyone's like, oh, great job, good job, and I don't really, I wasn't searching for an atta boy. I mean, I just think it's something that, as a board member, and I happen to be the board president, that needed to be made, and it wasn't very challenging to do so, and to call out groups when they should be called out. At the same time, it doesn't mean we don't support the First Amendment. We do. Hate, speech that's repugnant is protected by the Constitution, but doesn't mean we support those kinds of groups or we support violence. That has no place anywhere in our country or in our college campus, so thank you very much. Trustee Jay.
Thank you. I wanted to thank our interim chancellor, Dr. Deborah Fitzsimmons, also for the statement of unity against racism, bigotry, and violence, and it was signed by the board president, you and the two presidents. Thank you very much for that statement. I also wanted to congratulate IVC 2017 President's Award for Classified Manager Leadership, which went to Aliska Oransky, for the leadership in building our successful and respected IVC College Foundation. Again, a special congratulations to IVC for the foundation reaching a million dollars. On Monday, August 14th, I attended the IVC president's breakfast. They had a wonderful speaker, Chip Espinoza, who talked about the different generations and how to reach them in teaching. It was very, very interesting. That afternoon, I attended the college president's candidate forum number one, and I attended all the forums for the four different candidates throughout the week. On Tuesday, August 15th, I attended the chancellor's opening session and breakfast at the McKinney Theater. It was so nice to see so many of the past retirees there, and it was so thoughtful to have them invited. I so enjoyed the 50th Anniversary Commemorative Video, brings back wonderful memories to me. And I, congratulations to all those who earned their five-year, 10-year, 15-year, 20, 25, 30-year pins. And I was really surprised, congratulations to the four people who earned their 40-year pins at the district. And that was 40 years, that was wonderful. After the chancellor's opening session, I attended the South Orange County Community College District's Faculty Associating Meeting and Luncheon. There was presented Negotiation Information Update. This was hosted by Mark Blutham, and Faculty Association President, and Louis Long, Faculty Association Negotiator. Your presentation was very good, very informative. Wednesday, August 16th, I attended the president's open session and faculty breakfast. Then I also attended the college-wide Student Success Committee, and also that morning, I attended the Student Veterans, creating a veteran-friendly classroom. Thanks, Terrence Nelson and Mike Sauter. The presentation was excellent, very informative. I just wish that it was better attended. I also, and I attended all the public forums. Thank you, Deborah, for the ellipse viewing party this morning. That was a lot of fun, interesting, and thanks for doing that for the employees of the district. It was fun.
Thank you. Trustee Prendergast.
Well, I guess everybody's already said it. Going last, I get to say ditto.
Nice job.
Thanks.
Student trustee Larson.
Yes, I would like to second the ditto. I did attend the student trustee workshop. This was my second time going to such an event, and it's a great opportunity for me to meet other student trustees, some of which are, I could tell are going to be lifelong friends. I look forward to learning from them, what's going on in their district, and hopefully applying it to ours. And yeah, the statement in support of unity, it's, you know, a huge deal with our generation, being a millennial myself, and it does make me proud to be a part of such an organization, and I do think it's the right mentality for the district to have going forward for success. Thank you.
Thank you. Chancellor's report.
First of all, I want to welcome everybody back for the fall semester. I loved seeing the campus buzzing with activity today. It was good to see all the students back, because that's what we're here for, and that's what it's all about, so that was really wonderful, seeing all the energy. As we welcome back our students, I wanted to take a moment to read our district's statement of unity into the record in the wake of the violent events in Charlottesville. Let's unite to welcome all students seeking to fill their dreams through higher education. So here's the statement that we sent out Friday. "The South Orange County Community College District is shocked and saddened by the recent events in Charlottesville, Virginia. We remain deeply committed to the freedoms guaranteed by the First Amendment of the United States Constitution concerning expression, religion, and the right of citizens to assemble peacefully and petition their government. However, it is critical that we affirm the district's position against hate speech and violence. Racism and bigotry are unacceptable, are anti-ethical to our values. As community college educators, we are committed to leveling the playing field so that all people can access higher education to achieve their dreams. Community colleges exist to serve people from all walks of life and perspectives. By design, we welcome people of diverse backgrounds, and we cherish thoughtful debate and the sharing of ideas. There is no place in our district for hate, intolerance, or violence. Equity and equality are essential to our mission, and we will continue to ensure that our campuses provide a safe environment for all. We are grateful to our faculty, staff, and administrators for all they do each day in support of our students, and wish you a successful and peaceful academic year. We want to thank the board and the presidents for joining me and communicating this important message. In addition, I wanted to mention, as you already know, last week, we did host the public forums and elicited your feedback for the Saddleback College Presidential Finalists, and we had a really great turnout, and I appreciated your input. I think that it was a really valuable way to do things. I think that having that feedback, everybody was very appreciative of having those sessions. It was really well-attended, so, and I think it was really good that we had it during professional development week, so we got a lot of faculty students. Leslie Humphrey brought a lot of student government leaders. That was really good to see. So it was a cross-cut of all the various constituency groups across the campus, and that was really appreciated. And I, people kept coming up and saying they really appreciated the opportunity. People took the time to fill out those feedback forms, and those were invaluable. They took, they really spent a lot of thought and care to providing their comments and wanting to make sure that they provided their thoughts on the candidates, and they really listened and appreciated and attended those public forums. We also had a session with the president's Consultation Council. I think that was also, that's the president's group, consultation group, as is its name, and I think that group also was able to provide a different, unique perspective, and they also provided feedback. And then I also got to attend dinner with the candidates each day, as well as, we had a couple other sessions as well. So I think, I think overall, it was a busy day for the candidates. They were, it was a very competitive, highly qualified group, and when we make a decision, we plan to make a decision as soon as we possibly can over the next couple weeks. So thank you again, and we wish you a best fall semester.
Thank you, Chancellor Fitzsimmons, and I didn't, wasn't intending on saying something, but I just wanted to tell people, you know, we just completed our evaluation of the chancellor. We had a session a couple of weeks ago, and I can tell you that she has strong support from this board. Deborah, you're doing a really good job. I know that title of interim is still in there, but you are the chancellor, regardless of whether it says interim, and I think you have a lot of support from this board, and I really appreciate the kind of work you've put in. I think it's paying off, so thank you for that. College presidents' reports. Dr. Rock.
I will go ahead and start off here. I'll make it short, though. We had a wonderful professional development week. The energy was incredible, and I would like to thank all of the trustees that participated at IVC and, of course, at Saddleback as well. I know that's extra duty for you, but we really liked seeing you there. And then today was, I'm sure you want to know how the first day started up. I spent the first part of the day at one of the booths, and so I had the opportunity to hear the questions that students had, the things that they had trouble finding, and just to absorb the enthusiasm that they had as they prepared to go to class. So it was a smooth opening, and I'm sure we're going to have a great semester, so I'll end with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Acting president Whitaker.
Thank you. I'm going to relinquish my report and ask Tony Tang, our dean over at Saddleback, he's got some introductions to make.
Great, thank you very much, trustees. I would like to thank President Whitaker for deferring her time to us, because we wanted to share with you, the board, the, something that I feel very passionate about is that working with IVC and Saddleback, we have one of the best CTE programs in Orange County. And we wanted to demonstrate that today by providing you some information of what happened this summer. There was a national competition called the Graphic Arts and Research Foundation, and for the past nine years, it's been a national competition that we've been applying to. And with Marsha, with your glasses, we eclipsed them. I had to say that. So anyways, I'm gonna refer this over to the instructor, Steve Gonkowski, and he'll tell you all about it.
Hi. Yeah, we did clean-sweep the competition. We took first, second, and third place. The beautiful thing about this competition is that it is free for the students to enter, but there are cash prizes, so third place gets to take home a grand, $1,500 for second, and first place, $2,000 plus an all-expense-paid trip to Chicago, where the big meeting for the print industry that this foundation is attached to, and also myself, get the expense paid to be with the student to accept the award. And we have with us Sagil Banker, who was our second-place winner in the contest. The other two students, you know, send their appreciation. They weren't able to make it tonight, but they were very thankful that you were recognizing them.
Thank you, but thank all three of you. Now we have the Associated Student Governments. Let's, I guess, start with IVC.
Hello, and good evening. So with ASG of IVC, we've had training from August 6th to August 11th with members of ASG of IVC, Equity Student Leadership Team, Diversity Equity Peer Educators, and Inclusivity Diversity Equity Alliances. In total, we had about 60 students attend our train, so that was a really good turnout for us. Also, our legislative, or our vice president of Legislative and Academic Affairs, Salvador Sanchez, attended the first academic senate meeting, and he just wanted to tell me, to tell you, tell everyone here that he really enjoyed the meeting, and how insightful, and he's super excited for attending the next upcoming meetings. ASG of IVC has also participated in three days of student leadership modules that focus on equity, learning about, equity, learning about differences, and building our competencies around culture. And, this is my last one, so, ASG of IVC student leaders have also participated in Laser Week, which is a new student orientation that occurred a week before school started, and so it was a really, it was a really good, it was a really good turnout, and everyone really had a good time helping the students throughout the three days of Laser Week, and so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, ASG Saddleback College.
Good evening. Last week, Saddleback ASG held their two-day retreat last Thursday and Friday here on campus at Saddleback College, and we also collaborated with IVC. So we drove up to the IVC campus, which was great, because a lot of us hadn't been there, so it was really neat to see where our sister school is located and where our fellow peers also attend classes. And we had a joint Brown Act and Parliamentary Procedures training, which was very informative to both of us. And also, President Whitaker came to our retreat here on campus and facilitated a three-hour leadership and communication training, so we were very grateful to have her attend and facilitate that. I know it was very beneficial for all of us. And right now, it's welcome week at Saddleback, so we are out every day in the quad from about 10 to 3, promoting the ASB stamp, promoting campus life at Saddleback College, and just encouraging students to get involved as much as they can while they're here taking classes. And that is all. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I understand there might be an interest to have the ASG budget presentations moved up. Is that the case? Okay, without objection, we're gonna move forward to this current place in the agenda, item 6.1, and let's do the, oh, excuse me. Are there any board requests for reports? We have none. Thank you. Okay, I think, without objection, I'd like to move forward, 6.1, the ASG budget presentations. Who will go first? Or are you doing it jointly? Okay.
Hello. My name is Sessa Hurd-Johnson, Director of Student Life and Equity Programs and Advisor to the Associated Student Government of Irvine Valley College. And so I'd like to introduce Samantha Zan, who is our ASG president, and Chris Cordes, who is our ASG Vice President of Budget and Finance, and they will do your presentation this evening.
Alrighty, thank you, Sessa, for that lovely introduction, so. I will defer to Chris for the slide.
All right, so I guess we're taking a look here at the budget, ASIVC budget, for the year of 2017 and 2018. This was something you should have already seen a little bit earlier. There's only three real things to note. As you can see on the right, there's A, which would give you our adopted budget for 2017 and 2018, and the change from the last year. There's B, which shows you the change in bookstore, as we just renegotiated with the bookstore and made a new contract. And then there would be C, which would be the contingency that we currently have, which actually has increased by a lot. The contingency is for any clubs or organizations that may need mid-year money for specific or emergency reasons, like, let's say, I think last year, MUN had to go in an emergency to New York. Well, it wasn't really an emergency, they were lucky to be allowed to go to New York, but they came and asked us for funds.
I just want to also note, the reason that we have additional funds is because a lot of co-curriculars and departments did not use our money, so it returned back to our student government, and the additional $14,000 is because of the... And the additional fourteen thousand is because of the, I, IVC renewed its bookstore contract this year, and the fourteen thousand dollars comes from the first-year guarantee that we got from the new contract this year. This slide is basically showing the highlights of the ASG of IVC budget. This is, this has still, this is still the same, this is still, has, has remained unchanged from the May tentative budget. So, when deciding on how we distribute the funds for, with, for ASG of IVC, our organization relies on our four goals that we have for guidance. Our first goal is services and activities in which we create purposeful connections with the campus on events such as Laser Week. And we also host the Take Your Faculty to Lunch program, which allows any IVC student to take any professor to the IVC Laser Cafe using a twenty-dollar voucher provided by ASG. We also host academic program meet-and-greet, which allow ASG student centers to connect with students on campus to find out any various concerns and issues that each department might have. And we also plan to host our Laser Rewards program as well. Our second goal would be our student leader, leadership development, extensive training, or extensive tra, training to ensure effective student participation in campus and district shared governance. We, ASG of IVC also, also values new equity student leadership modules to increase all student, students' cultural competency, skills, and knowledge. Our third goal would be facilities and technology. ASG of IVC values reconfiguring our student game room space into a leadership center where members of advisors of student clubs and organizations can work, study, meet, and network. Furthermore, our last goal, fiscal management. ASG of IVC will be continuing our efforts to work with local businesses and companies to offer student discounts to provide more value to the ASIBC sticker. Well, thank you for this opportunity, and I will now leave the floor, floor to any questions.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any questions? Trustee Milchker.
Yeah, I thought it was an excellent presentation. I have some comments and a few questions. One, I was on the Irvine Valley College, College Campus for the President's Address to the Campus, which was excellent, and the Classified Senate Lunch, which was excellent also. And I was able to see a lot of the students there for Laser Week, and I saw how they were being oriented. I saw some of the students had, had actually brought their parents with them, and the students were being taken on tours of the campus. And I really thought, wouldn't, this is really important for our students who are a hundred percent commuting students, to really have an orientation to the campus and feel like they're part of campus life. So I applaud you for, or, you know, for creating this and for also for funding it. I was wondering, you started doing the, something that the students actually have to opt out of getting their ASB stickers, is that it? No, that didn't start yet? They were talking about doing it last time.
Yes, and so there were some concerns by different groups within both campuses about continuing ed students and if they have to pay and so forth. And so both schools have to be on the same page to be able to move forward. And so when there were issues and concerns brought up, we've kind of sort of held back, and so we're working with both of the schools and both of the programs. So the opt-out hasn't happened just yet, but we're ready to go.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for, for explaining that to me. That's really good to make sure that both colleges are on the same page and the students fully understand it. And I was, my question was, how is it working? But, but you haven't even implemented it yet, so thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I also wanted to thank both of the student presenters. Thought you did a wonderful job on the budget today. Couple of questions that I had were, I saw there were a couple of what looked like new initiatives for this coming fiscal year. One had to do with the cafeteria repairs, which I think was mentioned on one of the slides, so I was interested in hearing maybe just a little bit more about what's going on there. And then there was a ten thousand dollar award for diversity and equity multicultural leadership training. And then finally, what was the other one I saw in there? Something about Office of Safety and Security Cadet Program Uniforms and Supplies. So maybe you could just briefly talk about what, what those are all about.
So, the first question that you had regarding the bookstore, or cafeteria, one of our biggest funding sources is also the cafeteria, as well as the bookstore. That's why I made the mistake there. And they were requesting for a couple of years already that they do, we do help them out with some renovations, and as they are a primary source of funding for us, and they do fulfill our facilities and technology goal, we did decide to fund them for part of the repairs and maintenance that they needed. I think you know the equity stuff better than I do.
So, along with the student equity funds that we received from the California State Chancellor's Office, there was a need for us to provide more cultural competency training for our student leaders. So workshops that talk to them about how to be more aware of knowledge and skills and working with diverse groups. So it aligns with our student learning outcomes around global thinking. And so the series of workshops are what Samantha mentioned, are called ESLAM, Equity Student Leadership and Advocacy Modules. And so we did three of them during our training, and they're going to happen all throughout the year, where we bring in potentially speakers, but we have the students interact and have interactive activities and workshops and discussion groups, and just really to talk about issues that are impacting them and issues that are going on that are timely, because we feel like if we don't give them a place to dialogue about it, it won't really go anywhere. And so that's kind of the multicultural programmatic aspect.
And then finally, in regards to the cadet program. Last year, a lot of our events at IVC, we actually received help in terms of campus security from our Association of Justice, or AOJ, club. They were really great, and they helped us out with stuff, but unfortunately, due to like, a lack of commitment from enough members, they actually returned all of their funding for that year, and they left the gap. And the Chief of Police, really great guy, he came up to us, and he asked if, if he could kind of take up the program. He asked for quite a bit of money, I think it was fifty thousand. We cut him down a little bit, but, you know, at the same time, it's, it was, for us, it seemed like an opportunity that filled a few of our goals, and also it would fill the gap that AOJ was leaving. Great, thank you.
Thank you. I see no further questions, so thank you for your presentation and for your fine answers to the questions. And I think next up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Saddleback College.
My name is Erica Delamar. I'm the ASG President for Saddleback College ASG, and I will be presenting part of the presentation. Unfortunately, Stephanie Strain, who's the ASG Director of Budget and Finance, had a class conflict this evening, so our ASG Vice President, Camiar Faze, will be taking her place.
In front, on the screen over there, you see our tentative budget chart for the year. So some things I want to point out. If you go over and look at item F, you can see that our, from, for the ASG Operations Personnel, our tentative budget over to our adopted budget was decreased about six thousand dollars. This was due to a miscalculation. Also, if you take a look at our mid-year requests, item G, you'll see that we have removed all funds from this. So that, if there are any requests for this, we will be taking money from the special topic grants and moving it towards that. On a brighter side, due to a higher beginning balance than expected and because of an increased in-contract revenue, as you can see, from the tentative to the adopted, all uses of funds have increased.
Alrighty, so some of the budget highlights. For our beginning balance, we have a little bit over eighty-two thousand dollars, which is much higher than we had expected. From the tentative budget, we thought we'd be receiving sixty thousand, but now we have about twenty thousand more dollars left, which is great. For stamp sales, stamp sales, we're still projecting about fifty thousand, but we are working to find more ways to increase those. Let's see. For the bookstore, we just signed a new contract with the Saddleback College Bookstore. And because of that, for this first year, they have guaranteed us two thousand, two hundred forty-four thousand dollars, so that is a lot more money than we had also anticipated. So we're going to be able to use that money to fund more things. And as always, we're going to continue to give money towards scholarships. So this year, we're dedicating twenty percent to student scholarships. And as Cam explained, we're doing the mid-year requests a little bit differently. If there are any, we plan to take money out of these special topic grants and putting it into the mid-year requests. Alright, moving on to our goals.
So these are some of our goals for the year 2017, 2018. Goal number one, as you can see, is to increase our communication and outreach. So our Director of Division Affairs, we, which is our liaison between ASG and the different divisions here on campus, we do wish to strengthen this position so as, so that we can be working a little harder to see what each division wants to see from ASG, so that we can work towards those goals together. Also, as you can see, we, one of our goals is to increase the, to make Saddleback a more eco-friendly campus, and one thing we have done is we have created an Officer of Sustainability. And one thing we want to do with this officer is to work with different divisions here on campus, see what we can do for them, what they can do for us. And we do have a couple other goals, hopefully that we can implement, such as more recycling, compostability, and even, this might be a long shot, solar panels to decrease our use of non-sustainable energy. Also, as you can see, goal number two, increase our assessment of programs and services. So a role that ASG plays with different divisions here on campus, such as liberal arts, fine arts, math sciences, et cetera, is that we provide funds for their different programs, services, and events. And one thing that we would like to do is have, is have better documentation of these events to see the different, to see attendance, how satisfactory it is to these attendance, and based off of that, create our budget for the following year. And then I will pass goal number three over to Erica.
Thank you. So a couple other things we're looking to do this year is to really put and place an importance on student health. We have an amazing student health center, and we feel that on ASG, it doesn't get enough recognition from students. Students aren't taking advantage of it. So we plan to really promote a lot of the services that are offered through student health. And one thing that we'd like to do is to have a Mental Health Awareness Month, probably in October, working with different departments, using some of our funds to make the services on campus known to all students. In addition, we continue, we are going to continue working with EOPS and DSPS to work with them on their Turkey Drive and Adopt a Family, as well as creating other awareness months to bring attention to certain topics that we on ASG find are relevant and crucial for student awareness. And also, we plan to raise more money for the Emergency Fund. Another thing that we want to focus on this year through that is being a good support system for our homeless students. So by that, we want to have different fundraisers throughout the year and raise money, and also work closely with student health services to see how we can help these students. So, we will now take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. It was a great presentation. I agree with you on the student health center. I just utilized it on Friday and today, and they're doing an amazing job. And thank you for your increased donation to student scholarships as well.
Absolutely.
Trustee Lang.
Yes, again, I also want to echo what a fine presentation that the both of you did on the budget. Thank you very much. Just a couple of quick questions. I noticed on the, I think it was the tentative budget chart, that you had indicated that scholarships had increased from the prior year. Looks like roughly around, little under sixteen thousand dollars. You see where I'm looking under, okay? And then I'm, I'm going into the uses of funds detail, and seeing under student scholarships that it looks like the foundation scholarships are, were actually decreased by a little under fourteen thousand dollars. So I'm trying to figure out how to reconcile the numbers on scholarships. It's under student scholarships, number one, SC Foundation Scholarships.
I'm going to bring our Campus Life Director, Chris Hargreaves, because I'm not quite sure I can answer that question properly.
Okay, the cavalry is coming in.
Hi, for those of you who haven't met, my name is Chris Hargreaves. I'm the Director of Student Life here at Saddleback College. So I think the answer to your question is that, as far as the decrease for this next fiscal year, that main decrease is because of a less amount of beginning fund balance. And so, you know, we had back in 2016, 17, I think there was about a hundred and six thousand in the beginning fund balance. This year, we have about eighty. And so, twenty percent off of that would be less, and then dividing it out between the foundation account, the scholarships that go to Child Development Center for those scholarships, and the scholarships that go to the book loan program. And so, so unfortunately, those got a little decrease because we have less money, we have about twenty thousand less, but that's where that difference probably comes in.
Okay, thank you. And then the only, the other thing that I noticed that I wasn't certain about was, under Campus Life, there was something called NBU Staff, and I wasn't sure what that was.
Sure, I can answer that one, too. So that one is actually some of the project specialization student help that work out, that work in the Student Development Office. And so with that, you know, ASG gives student development some funds to do some programming for campus, as well as to, you know, work with the, the club registrations and those sort of areas. And so those are students that help out with those areas.
Okay, so it sounds like we'll have a few less dollars to hire some folks in that area.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Milchker.
I also wanted to say it's an excellent presentation, and Erica, you were fabulous in the 50th anniversary video. And you have a new, a new, a new career ahead of you as, as a film star, so you were really excellent. And if any of you haven't seen the 50th anniversary video, you really have to see it. So it's, it's wonderful. Anyway, I, I just, I want to say that I'm happy that you're funding money for student mental health and for the food pantry and clothing for homeless students, because we recently had a presentation that notified us that there's a lot of homeless students at Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College, and many of us didn't know that they existed, but they do. And so to keep them fed and clothed is very important, and the students now, of course, can take showers on all the campuses after that bill is passed. But I applaud you for, for making sure our students are mentally and physically healthy so that they can learn, and they can do well in, in college. So thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have approval of both the Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College?
Not. Okay. We have a motion from Trustee Lang, and a second from Trustee Prendergast to approve the Saddleback College and IVC ASG budgets for the next fiscal year. Any further questions on it? Okay, let's go ahead and, and vote on the item. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. Thank you very much. Thank, thank you Saddleback and IVC for excellent presentations. Now, we- Now, we are going to move back to where we were before we moved forward, six point one, and that is four point one, the Saddleback College Athletic Stadium renovation project.
Alright, good evening, Board of Trustees, and I'm Chancellor Deborah Fitzsimmons. Last June of 2016, we were here before you, and we had a rather lengthy presentation to go over the needs for the Saddleback College Stadium renovation and site improvement project. We discussed the various funding sources, which was multiple funding sources, basic aid funds, RDA funds, redevelopment authority funds, as well as local funds, to be able to pull that project together. It had a lot of community supporters here with us that evening. I don't know if you remember that. A lot of testimony about the need for the stadium. So I'm very pleased to be able to introduce a couple people who are going to provide an update to the stadium project tonight. So I have to get our plug in for our fiftieth anniversary video, which is on the district and college websites. But as you can see, in nineteen sixty-seven, this is what the district looked like. Saddleback was born one year later in nineteen sixty-eight, and they're going to be celebrating their fiftieth anniversary, their birthday. And a year after that, in nineteen sixty-nine, the stadium was built. So as you know, it's, it's aging, and it has some needs in that facility. I'm going to turn it over to both Coach Mark McElroy and Mary Opel, who is our construction manager at the district, who's overseeing the project. They're going to talk about the needs, to recap what the needs were for the stadium project, as well as what the current design and timeline looks like. So with that, Mark first, and then Mary. Thank you.
Good evening. It's good to be here. It's good to be talking about this facility that we've waited so long for and are excited about. The original stadium was constructed in nineteen sixty-nine, and that's actually when I moved here and lived just across the street over there off Avery here. Maximum seating was forty-five hundred, and the restrooms have since all been outside the stadium. I'm sure you've seen pictures and videos of that. It's an eight-lane track that was resurfaced in two thousand nine. The press box and grandstands are not ADA accessible. It was an inadequate concession area. The maintenance of the natural turf did not allow for, for multiple sport use as well as community use. And the sound system had been pieced together over the years. Sounded a lot like my Dotson B-210 I had back in the day with the music in that. Insufficient seating for high school football games. I personally had taken video of people actually sitting up in the grass and the weeds up there at big games over the course of time. And no meeting rooms for athletes near the stadium or practice fields. And there were, because of that, a lot of game management issues. So those were some of the reasons on why we needed to be able to move forward with this and with the support of the board and, and Academic Senate and everybody else. It's been, it's been a great ride so far.
So you can see some of the photographs here of what Mark was talking about, about the students that were sitting in the, in the weeds, and also the restrooms are very impacted because there are very few that are currently out there at the PE five hundred building and PE three hundred. So basically, for the new stadium design that we've been working on for the past year, the new stadium will have eight thousand seats. It'll have seventy-five hundred bench seats with five hundred big seats that are on the home side. We're going to have legal code compliant restrooms inside of the stadium. So that increases our, helps increase our safety as well by not having people coming in and going out. We're increasing to a nine lane running, a nine lane running track, a brand new concession stand that will be located on the home side. We're going to have nice, permanent storage for both football, soccer, and track and field. And the new stadium and its configuration and the amount of seats that we have will allow us to host CIF Southern Section requirements for semi-season, semifinal postseason games. We'll have a new press box, and it's going to be an amazing press box. We'll have athletic team rooms that are actually out at the stadium, so halftime, they'll be able to retreat to their respective rooms and then come back out for the second half. We'll have new entry ticket pavilions on both the north end by Lot One, Lot One B, and then also on the south end down by the Child Development Center. We'll have synthetic turf fields, so it's not just the stadium, but we're building two complete football practice fields as well as a new soccer field. All of that will be synthetic turf, a brand new state-of-the-art video scoreboard, new and improved sound system with integrated Wi-Fi, so if you're sitting there, you'll be able to be on Wi-Fi. And all of the facilities that we have will be ADA compliant. Here's a rendering of basically the composite. It's not just a stadium, it's actually an athletic complex. So it will be the stadium with the running track, all of the practice fields. And then at the very south end will be the Throwers Park for track and field, so we will be able to have that at the facility as well. Another rendering, just basically lining up where everything fits and how it fits. So basically, right now where we have a berm going along College Road, that comes out, and the whole stadium comes out to the road, and that entire area, including the driving range, goes to the same elevation of the street. So it's going to be much more visible as you're driving down the road. One of the special features that we do have that was put into this project by the designer is a viewing deck. So at the very top of the bleachers on the home side, there'll be this viewing deck under the elevated press box. So normally you have the press box at the very back. Here, it's elevated. Up in our press box area, we will have a conference room, a gaucho room for special events with an outdoor deck there as well. And our current project timeline, we're at fifty percent construction documents right now. We're actually going to DSA for a meeting this week. We look at submitting at the end of next month, receiving approval from DSA Division of the State Architect in January, construction commencing in February with the first football season there in fall of two thousand nineteen. So if there are any questions?
Yes, there probably are. Trustee Prendergast.
Just, just to see if we can get some information on where you guys are going to play and practice and so forth while it's being constructed, just kind of get an idea of the plan behind that.
The, the time that it was going to start, break ground, has changed to January. So we'll be, we were intending to play at Mission Viejo High School this year, but it looks like we'll be able to push it off for one more year. And of course, that's where I saw my first Saddleback football game, was at Mission Viejo High School many years ago. So I'm actually looking forward to taking the gauchos to Mission Viejo High School for one year and bring back a lot of memories. So as far as football is concerned, we'll be practicing here on our regular practice fields that we've been practicing on. I will play our home games here this year. The next year, we'll still practice here, but then our home games, if approved, will be at Mission Viejo High School. I know that we're still looking for where we're going to have track, and I know that soccer has a place to go to as well.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, just a real quick question. I noticed in the presentation that it is going to be a turf field as opposed to grass, which I'm certain is less costly and less, you know, a lot less maintenance. But just concerned about injuries and what's, what's the state of the art in terms of grass versus turf?
Well, I mean, obviously, or I shouldn't say obviously, but I think it's, it's, it's always great to play on grass. The difficulty with grass is just the maintenance of it, and when you have a use of it, it, it breaks down pretty, pretty quickly. The all-weather surf, we've got the, the surface, we've got cool turf, that's our cool play that's going into it, that reduces the temperature of the field about, by about thirty degrees. And so that was a big plus for us to be able to put that in with the field turf, because my number one concern as a coach was the safety of the athletes. There have been studies that have been done on injuries on field turf, and they're, they go both directions, I guess is the best way to say it. The nice thing about having field turf is that if it's pouring rain the night before, you can still go out and practice, actually even practice in the rain, and it's not an issue. Whereas with grass, it becomes a, a real problem.
Thank you. And I just want to say, tomorrow night, I look forward to, we're doing a presentation to the Mission Viejo City Council. We've been invited by the mayor to do a presentation on the stadium renovation project. I'll be participating in that with the Acting Chancellor and Coach Mac and Mary tomorrow, so I look forward to that. And then, second thing I wanted to ask you, maybe Mary, if we were able to get the Saddleback College Foundation involved in some way, I mean, are, are we too far along in the project to allow for additional donations, bricks, naming of scoreboard?
No, they're actively working on that right now. They're, they're actively working on that right now. So I've been communicating with Don Rickner even today on the scoreboard itself. So working through that. So yes, there's still time. Correct.
Okay, good. Yes.
Could I just add to that? I know that at, several of my previous institutions, we've had brick campaigns. Is there any place in this project, if we were to develop a brick campaign, that that would be appropriate to do? Where we can have naming, you know, bricks and, you know, sort of a walkway up or something like that? Is that too late to put into the design?
It would be at the entrance plaza at either of the north end or the south end, right after where you go into ticketing and enter it, because that is scheduled to be pavers.
Okay, alright, good to know.
Okay, seeing other, other questions? Thank you, and I'll see you two tomorrow night.
Thank you very much for all your support.
Okay, we are now on to the consent calendar, and I'm wondering, do we have any polls? Trustee Prendergast.
Five point one three.
Five point one three.
Five point eleven.
Trustee Wright, five point one one.
And I'll do five point one five.
Five point one five. Trustee Lang, and then I'm going to poll five point three. Alright.
Can you repeat those?
So we have, try to go in order here. Five point three, I have polled. Five point one one is Trustee Wright. Five point one three is Trustee Prendergast. I wrote TJ by both yours and mine. And then Trustee Lang, five point one five. Do we have a? Move the remainder of the items?
Yes, I'll move.
Oh.
It's not up yet.
Move approval.
I have a motion from Trustee Lang.
Second.
And a second from Trustee Milchker to approve the balance of the items not, that have not been polled. Any further questions or discussion on those? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. We have unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. So let me, I guess I'm, I've got the first item, and it has to do with. I didn't see that on this vote, but it should. Do you want to adjust it? Okay, the unanimous trustee yes vote, six to zero, we have one trustee absent, and then we had a student advisory yes vote. Just didn't come up on the screen here. I, I pulled this item not because I'm not supportive of doing it, I am. I, I just, I, I had, I, I've been, I've been trying to figure out ways to be helpful as a board member to improve and make more cost-effective our contracting process, and occasionally items pop up. And I think it's a bigger discussion than this particular item. I saw some hourly rates in this item that seemed excessively high for architectural services. I love architects, has nothing to do with not liking architects. Has to do with that we are public agency, and I guess I did, you know, Brandy, if you want to come down here. It seems to me in some instances that there are vendors or service providers that seem to have what I consider a public agency rate and some that don't. And I guess, are there, are there buckets of service providers where they actually do provide public agency rates? For example, I know lawyer, some of our law firms on occasion will say this is a special rate because you're a public agency. Now, I don't know that it is or not, but they say that. So are there any instances when, are there service providers that actually do provide what I consider a rate that's more favorable to a taxpayer-funded institution?
I've not encountered them, primarily the architects that we work with. This is their bread and butter. Everything that they do is education or public agency work, and so their rates are their rates. It's been my experience with them. I've, I've never had one tell me, we're giving you a bonus rate.
Well, I've seen in some of the, the, the agenda items over the past five years where law firms have said this is a, this is a discounted rate for a, as a public agency, so I have seen it.
Oh, no, I don't doubt that law, law, lawyers might have those kind of rates. What I'm saying is I haven't experienced it with architects.
Oh, I had a broader question, which is maybe for a later discussion. Are there certain service providers, I guess law firms are one of them, that will offer you a rate that's more favorable to a public agency?
Then yes, based on what I'm hearing you say, absolutely, there are those firms. But my experience has, I haven't encountered them in my experience.
Okay. Alright, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I will, someone, Jim, Trustee Wright, sorry.
I had a question here. You know, you, you give the companies names, but, and city and the contact, but there's no, there's no bid there. Is there a reason why there isn't a bid? On what, on who bid what?
There is a reason. So when we select professional services, we're required first to select on their technical ability, and then after that, to consider the fees for the professional services. We don't evaluate them specifically on their fees, and so it would be a misrepresentation for us to put those fees in as if that was the, the reason that we made our decision. That's not the sole reason.
Okay.
Alright, I don't see any further questions. I think, see, we have a motion from Trustee Prendergast and a second from Trustee Lang. Any further discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, item. Item five point three is approved with a unanimous trustee yes vote. There is a trustee absent, but it's not noted. Need to correct that. And student advisory yes vote. Okay, so I think we're now at five point one one with Trustee Wright, but do you want to?
Yes.
Chancellor has a correction.
We had a question on this page, so thank you, Trustee Wright, for pointing us. The cover page of the item, under the recommendation, notes that the dates go from September one, twenty seventeen, to August thirty-first, twenty seventeen, and it should read August thirty-first of twenty eighteen.
Okay, that was my concern.
We didn't go back in time on this agreement. Now, please note that the contract is correct.
Okay, but that was my concern because, yeah, because it says September the first, two thousand, and then August thirty-first, so.
And I have to give kudos to Trustee Bobby J for pointing this out, so she gets a gold star because she saw this first. It was awesome, thank you.
She called you first, so.
Alright, good job. Okay, we have a motion to approve five point one one from Trustee Lang and a second from Trustee Wright. Any additional questions? Let's go ahead and vote on the item. The item is approved with a unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. So now we're on to five point one three, and that's Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I, I guess I pulled this for, for a couple reasons. Anyone who knows me knows that I am a strong supporter of the LGBTQ community. I've got lots of examples of how I've supported that community, and yet I have a concern with this from the standpoint of students. I, I totally get that if we were wanting to go to a conference or something in one of those states, we would just say no, we can't go because of where it is. of those states, we would just say, no, we can't go because of where it is. But it struck me, and I apologize, I didn't ask this ahead because I didn't think of it really until we got the, the presentation from the students that won the award and get to go to Chicago. If Illinois were on that list, would we not be able to send that group? And, and that concerns me, because if, if the students are aware that it's a state and they make a decision as students to say, no, we don't want to go, I, that'd be fine. But if they say, hey, you know, we really want to go, we want to get our award, I don't think we should deny them that opportunity. So my only change that I would ask maybe on this, it says that exceptions can be made by the vice president or vice chancellor of business services, but it doesn't include the vice presidents of instruction. And I think that might be an important change and note that they could, if the students petitioned to want to go to that, I don't think, I, and I don't, I don't know the, the legal ramifications of breaking the law, but I, I, I really want to make sure that we understand that we're not going to deny students the access to go somewhere strictly because a state is on a list that, and again, if they're made aware that that states on us and they, as students, say, all right, then we don't want to go either, you know, they can send us our award, fine. But if this, if they want to go, I, I, I really want to make sure that there's an avenue for that to happen. Go ahead, go ahead, chancellor Fitzsimmons.
That's exactly why we have that in the status. It says, any exceptions to the restriction due to extenuating circumstances must be approved by the vice chancellor of business services. The reason it says vice chancellor of business services is that is the individual that makes any travel exception with the recommendation by the VPI or the VPSS or the college president. And that's exactly why that's there, particularly for our student groups. We don't want to have a student be detrimentally impacted by this, but we also want to support the spirit of AB 1887, that's really important for us. I know our senators were interested in supporting that as well as obviously our state chancellor. So we thought that as a, as a working rule, we would do this, but if there was any kind of circumstance where this would impact our student group in the, in the manner that you had indicated, we will certainly entertain that. So that, what gives us that ability to do so.
But I think it's important, and I appreciate that. I think it's very important that we communicate that, that it's not, somebody looks at this and go, oh, man, I guess we can't go. I, it, it needs to be clear that that is a possibility, and in that sense, I very happily will move to approve this item. I just wanted to make sure that that was noted.
That's very, very good point. Thank you for raising it, trustee Prendergast. Okay. We have a motion from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee Lang to approve five point one three. No further questions, let's go ahead and vote. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. And I'm being.
No, that's for Deborah.
Oh. Not for me. All right, the last poll on the consent calendar is five point one five, trustee Lang.
Yes, I had actually asked about this with the chancellor beforehand, and it was really an inconsistency on the dates at the top of the two amendments in exhibit C, and I'm wondering if that was clarified. I don't think the chancellor's paying attention to me, though.
You're right, I was passing a note. You caught me.
So it's five, five point one five, exhibit C, the dates.
Yes, we're going to go back and make those corrections. You are right, they don't, they're not consistently changed, so I did talk to business services, and we will make those corrections. Thank you.
Okay, so do you want us to approve this?
Yes.
With the pending corrections?
With the pending corrections, please. Thank you.
Okay, in that case, I will make that motion.
And thank you for catching those. That was really good.
All right, we have a motion to approve five point one five from trustee Lang, second from trustee Wright. Any other questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. We have a, are we missing a vote? We have five trustee yes votes, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. Someone didn't vote.
You didn't.
Oh. I guess I'm the one.
Yeah, but I know you voted, so.
They keep passing notes in front of me, it's very distracting.
Sorry, I had a question.
Like I'm in fifth grade again.
We're going to try this again?
Let's do it again.
Could you, could we please re-vote?
Yeah, we're ready.
We're ready.
All right, no more notes. All right. Trustee J. It's my fault. Okay, we have unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote, and one trustee absent. All right, that concludes the consent calendar. We're now on to general action items. We have, we have already discussed six point one, and now I will move on to board agenda item six point two, which is the South Orange County Community College ATEP Grant of Easement Agreement with Pacific Bell Telephone Company, DBA AT&amp;T, public hearing. Before we have that public hearing, interim chancellor Fitzsimmons will provide an introduction.
The agenda item pertains to a public hearing to allow the district to enter into an easement with Pacific Bell Telephone Company doing business as AT&amp;T for utility purposes to maintain underground communication facilities on the ATEP site. The utilities will service both the IVC first building and provide future capacity for phase one of the ATEP site. There is one additional board item that relates to this public hearing, which is item six point three. If you have any questions throughout this public hearing process this evening, both Brandy Delena and I are here to assist.
Does the board have any questions to staff to assist with their understanding of this matter? Okay. Board, item six point two, public hearing on the matter at hand is now open. Comments are not to exceed five minutes. Public hearing is now closed. Is there any further discussion on this matter by the board of trustees? Seeing none, six point two is concluded. We will now move to item six point three. Do we have a motion? I have a motion from trustee Milchiker and a second from trustee J to approve item six point three. Any questions on this item? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. Okay, now we're on to six point four, which is ATEP Site Utilities and Infrastructure Phase One Project. And this is for, to conduct a public hearing at our next month's board meeting on September 25th, and I think the interim chancellor wants to say a few words.
Just a reminder that we are required by state law that we have to announce a month ahead that we're going to enter into public hearing, so your items six point four and six point five are just that for Southern California Edison and Southern California Gas Company, just like we just did for AT&amp;T.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. We have a motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee J to approve six point four. Are there any questions? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on the item. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. As the chancellor noted, six point five is also a notice to have a, conduct a public hearing next month on the ATEP Site Utilities and Infrastructure Phase One Project. Do you want to say anything else about it? Okay. Is there, there's a motion from trustee Prendergast to move forward, six point five for approval. Is there a second? We need a second. Second from trustee Milchiker. Any discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. We have, again, a unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, student advisory yes vote. All right, we are now on to six point six, Saddleback College Cafeteria Services renovation, adopt resolution 1726, design, build, delivery, method. We have a motion. I have a motion from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee Milchiker. Any questions from board members on this? Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, just a procedural question for Brandy, I guess. So when we say it has an estimated project budget of $3,500,000, we're not approving that amount, but if it goes over that, does it come back to us? Like, just procedurally, it, because it's not a direct approval, it's just an estimate, but at the same time. Yeah, I, I just don't, because we're voting on it, I want to make sure that we understand what that vote means.
You're not voting on the amount of the project at this time, that's as it states, an estimate. And then we'll hire a criteria architect who will identify, better identify the scope, and at that time, better identify the budget. And when we better understand those numbers, then we'll bring those to you in the future.
Does putting an estimate, though, get you in the danger that anyone who's paying attention out there and is putting a bid says, well, they're willing to go to 35, you know, 3,500,000, I'm going to bid 3,400,000? You know, I just, just want to make sure that we're doing things right.
Okay, so it's a project budget, it's not what we call a construction budget, and the project budget entails all kinds of additional things, like any kinds of surveys that might need to happen, or specialists that would come on board. So there are other costs involved in it. That's a project budget, a construction cost would be a portion of that budget. Does that help you?
Trustee Lang.
Yes, my, my only issue with this item was, is we provide the background information that says, okay, these are the reasons that we would use the design, build, delivery method, but we, when it comes to the status, we don't really say why we're, which of those reasons may be applicable to this particular project. And I think that would be helpful to sort of dovetail with, you know, why we're going this route.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
All right, we have, I think we have no further questions, so let's go ahead and vote on the item. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote, and one trustee absent. We are now on to item six point seven, Irvine Valley College, naming of the regional testing center at the Advanced Technology Education Park, better known as ATEP. Dr. Rockmore, are you going to say a few words about this item?
I would be happy to, but I think it could be better said by Dean Greiner, who's here tonight. She is over that testing center, and she has Mr. and Mrs. Lee with her tonight.
All right.
Thank you, Dr. Rockmore. Good evening, trustees. On behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Lee, who are with us this evening, Sylvia and Eric, I would like to ask for your support for this resolution, naming the testing center that will be at our new ATEP site. After their son, Chris Lee, he worked at the testing center for over five years, and before that, went to IVC, so he, his whole kind of adult career, if you will, was spent at Irvine Valley College. And as a result of that, since his untimely passing last September, the Lees have been, have become special friends of Irvine Valley College. So on their behalf, and with great honor, I urge you to adopt this. Thank you very much.
Thank you for speaking to that. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I intend to support this item tonight, but I would like to see, I guess, the policies that we have regarding naming to be tightened up quite a bit, so that we really have much better direction in terms of what the criteria is, which I don't think exists right now.
Trustee Lang is referring to BP 1500, which is a board policy. In that board policy, it talks about procedures to be established, about naming buildings, and there's general guidelines that are in there, but we really haven't established the procedures. And as you know, there was a board request for a report where we provided, trustee Lang, a few months back, where this is one of those procedures that we do need to proceed in the future, particularly as we have new buildings that we're going to be building in the future at both college campuses and the stadium. We're going to have potential naming rights opportunities, and it would be good to have those already established before we get into reacting to a potential naming right, rather than doing something more proactively. So I just want to say while I'm here that I do support this recommendation and appreciate the support that the Lee family has provided at IVC. Thank you.
And I just want to say I also support this recommendation, and I'm very sorry for your loss, and I really, on behalf of the board and the entire district, really appreciate that you've come forward with support for our community college district. It's very much appreciated. And, and I also agree with the sentiments of trustee Lang going forward, so that we do this in a, in a coherent way going forward. Thank you. I have a motion from trustee J and a second from trustee Prendergast to approve this item. So let's go ahead and vote. It is approved unanimously, six to zero trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. Thank you again. Okay, we are on to six point eight, agreement for software development and project management for New Desic.
I would just like to ask the vice chancellor, Bobby Muti, to go over this item.
Thank you.
Sometime back, we held a, a major pool, and New Desic won that pool for our large-scale managed services, information technology services. Since then, we have given them various things to work on. Tonight, they'll be working on six things. Three of them are continuations of things that we have built in the past, early alert system, a progress report, that is, smart schedule and positive attendance. Then there's the ongoing every year augmentation to our student information system. This is both a large list of items prioritized by the colleges for us to work on, as well as mandates that come down from the state. The state occasionally makes changes in things like repeatability and prioritization. And the last thing is we have money for a new project, the Student Success Project, called the Student Success Roadmap, and we're very excited about that.
Okay, I think the chancellor had a comment.
I just wanted to make sure that we talked about this a minute. We have been using contractors such as Nodestic for a couple of years now, for a lot of our student information system, very valuable projects that have really done some very innovative things, and our students have really well benefited. What we want to do, and I talked to vice chancellor Bermuda about this, was see how we can institutionalize some of this work. I think that what we'd like to try to do, and I asked vice chancellor Bermuda to come up with a proposal of possibly an organizational change, reorg possibly, where he can incorporate some of this work in employee, employee work rather than contractors. So he's going to assess his organization and see if he can do this in a way that might be mutually beneficial, where we have longstanding employees doing this work rather than contractors, and probably for a lesser cost. So that is something he's going to study and bring back to us to take a look at.
Thank you, and I just had a process question, Bob. When you say New Desic was selected from a pool, is this a pool of like pre-qualified firms that have already done like an RFQ?
Yes, it's very similar to the process that you use for construction, where you get a pool of certified folks, and we're doing the same thing now for a different level of services. We hope to have a, a pool of vendors we can draw from.
Approximately how many were in this pool?
In the New Desic pool, I think approximately about six for the original.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, we, oh, we have additional questions. Oh, well, let's do the, we have a motion and from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee Wright and trustee Milchiker.
Yeah, I was going to ask my question prior to Deborah speaking. You know, I, I always go to the Geek Report, and I, we've, our district has always been on the forefront of technological excellence for, for our students. You know, we started with my site, and I, you know, we could just go down the list and say how we've been so great, but in the future, these, these costs are just going to be higher and higher, and we need some kind of sustainability program to make sure we could fund these, these very important projects and make sure that we're up to date, both for our student, for, for, in, in every, in every computer way in the college, in every, so, so I, I think we, it's really good to look into it. So I think it's really good to look into it, because the costs are only going to escalate, and we just need to keep up to date with all this stuff for our students. They, the millennials want up-to-date equipment, they want to learn on the latest iteration of Microsoft, and it's really important to have the latest equipment, but we need to fund this, so we need to look into this to make sure that we can continue to fund these projects. Okay? Thank you.
Yes, excellent point, trustee Milchekar. The costs do go up, and we're constantly looking for ways that we can cost contain. So there are different ways we do that. As the interim chancellor mentioned, we're looking at a reorganization that will probably possibly bring more of this work in-house. Another thing we've done is in our infrastructure, we've taken advantages of new technologies such as virtualization blades, to actually reduce both the energy use and the number, the amount of equipment that we have, even though the number of servers continues to go up, we're using other strategies such as co-location and cloud services to try to cut costs. So we are trying to cut our costs wherever we can, because we also know that as threats rise in other areas, like security, we will have additional spending in those areas.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Wright.
I just wanted to say, I was just, was looking at Exhibit A, page one, where it says, enhance the progress report, early alert system with the highest priority. I certainly know that this will help, particularly with student success, and also, the positive attendance collection system has always been a problem. I remember when I taught, that was always a problem, so any way we can enhance that will really help.
We've just gone live with that system, and we're very excited about it, and Jim and I going around, trustee Milchekar came to our Geek Report, and we were already soliciting feedback for the next round of improvements. Whenever we build something, there's a list we start of improvements that the team wants, and so we're glad that we're able to do this. The team itself prioritizes what functions are going to be worked on, because nobody's going to know it better than the people most intimately involved with it.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, thank you. I see no further questions, so let's go ahead and vote on the item. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and student advisory yes vote. We are now on to item 6.9, which is board member compensation. Oh, did I, sorry, did I miss you?
No.
Oh.
We didn't talk on this one.
Oh, okay.
But we can't talk until it's.
Okay, so we have an item, we're on 6.9, board member compensation, to adjust the monthly compensation for us.
I know.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
We have a motion from trustee Prendergast, and a second from trustee Wright, and trustee Prendergast is recognized.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's for the record, we've discussed this before, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we're still way under the stipend amount for the other districts in our comparable area, and we're way under the allowable amount that the state dictates based on our budget, and it's, so I want to make sure that, it's not like we're overstepping any bounds, or that it, that is, it's a marginal increase, it's thirty-seven dollars a month, or something like that. But, but, you know, in case there's any questioning, it's, it's below what we gave all the other employee groups, and it's below what everyone else is getting, and it's below what we're allowed, so in case anybody had those questions, I wanted to make that up for the record.
That is correct. Back in 2013, when we did adjust the board of trustee compensation at the time, we hadn't done it for many, many, many years, and all the other districts were at the California Code rate, which at that time was seven fifty, and we were in the four hundreds. And I know that we had committed to keeping up with inflation on this, and then four years have passed. So I was remiss to not have, do this, I wanted to make sure that we didn't get backwards again, we were already falling behind as a board, already from the beginning when we set that rate. So you're allowed to set it up to five percent each year, and for the last four years, it remained flat again. So here we go.
Thank you, trustee Prendergast, and chancellor Fitzsimmons. I just wanted to say that I'm glad this is on a public discussion item, that it's open for discussion. There's probably no compensation that some community members would agree that board members should get. I understand that, and I think the, the increase that's recommended is modest, maybe not modest to some, but I think it's modest, and the, and the fact that it has not been revisited for four years, I think, I think it's, at this point in time, is justified and makes sense. All right, so let's go ahead and vote on the item. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and student advisory yes vote. All right, on the floor, we have item 6.10, academic personnel actions.
There.
No changes?
There aren't any changes on this one.
Okay.
It's on the classified side.
Great, thank you. We have a motion from trustee Milchekar, and a second from trustee Jay. Any questions on the item? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and student advisory yes vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and student advisory yes vote. We now are on to 6.11, classified personnel actions. I understand there's an update.
Yes, we have made one change. Please approve all of the items with the exception of D3A, which is page twenty-three of page, of the twenty-six pages, and that would be the removal of the item that says eliminate facilities, operations supervisor at Saddleback, that is not being requested at this time.
Okay. Thank you for the update.
I have one question, too.
Okay.
Can I?
What, do you want to ask a question on her information item, or adjustment?
Yeah, it was, it was under the classified item, it was item C1, the infant toddler specialist that you're requesting, it's only a part-time position, but I wondered, does that mean that we're looking into taking care of infants in our childcare center?
I believe that, go ahead, you want to answer that?
I can do this. We currently have infants in our childcare center, and there are certain rules and regulations, requirements for infant care, and they've been covered under another job description, and, and we've just needed the one that's, that is specified to infant care, that, so that we are, we have all the qualifications for everyone we need. So it's, it's a technicality to add the, the job in for, in a category that we already have been covered, it's a cleanup.
Okay, okay, thank you. I know that the number of childcare specialists for infants are much higher for infants than than children, and so I, two of my children actually attended the childcare center before I was a trustee, and it was, it was excellent, so, and at that time, they didn't have an infant program, so thank you.
All right, thank you. We have motion from trustee Jay, and a second from trustee Lang to approve the item. Any additional questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes We're now on to item 6.12, which is an amendment to the 2017-2018 tenure track faculty hiring We have a motion to approve this item, a motion from trustee Jay, and a second from trustee Wright. Any questions on this item? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. 6.13, we have recessed to public hearing, the district, South Orange County Community College District, joint initial proposal for implementation of SB 1379. I didn't have any script, oh. Pardon me. Before we have that public hearing, acting vice chancellor, Diane Claru, will provide an introduction.
Yes, the board will conduct a public hearing to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on the proposal that has been jointly submitted by the district and the faculty association to negotiate an amendment to the academic master agreement on part-time faculty rehire rights, that it will then be in conformance with the education code. If you have any questions throughout the public hearing process, I will be here to assist.
Thank you, acting vice chancellor Claru, did I pronounce it correctly?
You did.
Does the board have any questions for staff to assist with their understanding of this matter? Board item 6.13, public hearing on the matter at hand is now open, public comments are not to exceed two minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any further discussion on this matter by the board of trustees? Item 6.13 is concluded. I don't think this is an item where we need a motion for approval. All right, thank you very much. We're now on to 7.1, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College speakers. These are our reports. 7.2, staff response to public comments from the previous board meeting in July. 7.3, basic aid report. 7.4, facilities plan status report. 7.5, monthly financial status report. Some trustee Prendergast, on 7.5?
Thank you so much.
Okay. 7.6, quarterly financial status report. 7.7, pension stabilization trust fund.
Yeah, I just want to thank the chancellor, or anyone who put this in, I was just thinking, we haven't seen anything on this, when is it, we're going to have to wait till board reorganization to get it on the, on the agenda, but I think this is very important to show that that stabilization fund is working the way we had hoped it would, and that will help us fund that, lack of a better term, the burden that the state put on, on public agencies to increase their STIRS and PIRS contributions. And we're very, very fortunate that we're in a position we are to do that, because I know there's a number of districts that are really still struggling with this, including the one I work in. And so hopefully, we can be a model for those agencies to try and do something like this.
I did want to add that it is on a quarterly basis, that's why, unlike the OPEB trust, which is monthly, because of the dollar amount, we have from Chima Accords projections, good news, because interest is looking really good on the account, and we might be able to fund an additional year beyond what we were projecting.
All right, thank you very much. We're now on to 7.8, retiree OPEB trust fund, and 7.9, quarterly investment report. All right, moving on, we now have reports from administration and governance groups, and we'll kick it off with Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Good evening, everybody. I have to admit that having a board meeting on the first day of school is tough. It's been a busy week and a busy day, but I'm glad we're moving forward with everything. Hope you enjoyed the eclipse this morning. It was a great teachable moment, there was lots of students, administrators, faculty and staff out on the quad, everybody with different devices to safely view the eclipse. It was a very successful professional development, development week as well, we've had lots of positive feedback. And a special thank you to Professor Jane Horlings, who coordinated the week. She will be retiring at the end of the year, so we're going to have to find somebody who can do that massive task, it's just not the professional development week itself, but it's tracking all the hours throughout the year for every individual faculty member. And also, finally, I appreciate the board's public comments against racism and bigotry, and their support of the travel ban. As I posted on my social media page, I'm proud to be a part of this district, and this is one of those things that reinforces it, so thank you.
Thank you. The Faculty Association, Mark Gluthen.
Thank you, Mr. President, good evening, board and administrators. This last week was professional development, as you all know, and we had a couple events. We had our Tuesday luncheon for the general faculty, as well as an orientation for new faculty on Friday, and I just wanted to personally thank all the board members and administrators, presidents and vice presidents, who showed up and attended those events. It was a great sign of support, and we really welcome you all to be there every time, so thank you.
Great, thank you. How much longer are, you're still president, right?
Oh, yeah. I have, we have a two-year term, unlike the senate presidents, who only have a year term, so we must have been really bad in a previous life.
Thank you. IVC Academic Senate.
Hi, I'm June McLaughlin, I'm new. Is my term only, Mark, is my term only two, one year?
Yes, correct.
Oh, they told me I had it for two years, so it's good to know.
You still want to do it?
Well, I ran unopposed, so I don't know. I look forward to working with everybody, I'm excited to be here and getting to know all of you all, so no other update than that, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Now have vice chancellor of Technology and Learning Services.
As the chair of the Saddleback College Presidential Search, I want to thank everyone for their attention to that process, and thank everyone that's been involved up until this point. I know the process isn't over, but I think we had a stellar committee, the people that served on that committee afforded you good candidates, we've had great teamwork together on that, folks in the chancellor's office, Grayson Joyce in my office, Don Main, our search consultants, just everyone that has shown up and really shown so much attention to this process, I thank you.
And thank you, Bob, for chairing the committee, and I think all board members would agree, we didn't see the entire process, but we saw some elements of it, and I think the public forums worked out very well. I think they were well-attended, and I think the questions were good and tough, as they should be.
Okay, vice chancellor, or are you acting?
I'm acting.
Acting vice chancellor of Human Resources.
Yes. And I just want to report that tomorrow, we have our very first committee meeting for the vice chancellor HR permanent person, and that we hope to have the second-level interviews on September 27th, so we're moving right along.
Thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And now we have acting, another acting vice chancellor of Business Services, Jim Bice.
You've got a lot of actors. It's a pleasure to be here, I've only been here, I don't know if I've been ten days or so at this point, but you've got a fine institution by reputation, and I'm finding that, as I'm now walking the halls and so forth, I'm pretty much hoping for just maybe next year, as you all, and I've got a few things to do this evening that we'll be working on, so I look forward to working with you and being part of this fine organization.
Thank you, and welcome aboard. We now have IVC Classified Senate.
Thank you. We had our first general meeting for the year, and it was very well-attended. Thank you, trustee Milchekar for coming, and Dr. Rockmore for hosting. It was very informative, and we, our professional development committee has scheduled our first summit for fall, and it's for August, I mean, October 6th, and it's going to be, they're going to have presentations on suicide prevention and Title IX, so it's going to be open to the whole campus, and that's all we have.
And to bring us to a close tonight, we have CSE, CSEA president Scott Green.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Wanted to thank the board for their stand, considering the events that happened in Charlottesville. Thank you, Dr. Fitzsimmons, for the same. It reminds me of a time about thirty years ago, we had a family wedding in Charlottesville, Virginia, because my mom's side of the family, my grandfather was born and raised in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And if anyone who knows my family, or could take a look at my family, knows that we're very diverse. We have members of all colors in my immediate family. I mean, the, the family joke is, don't bring your own beer, bring your own interpreter. And so, it's that type of, where in the course of my growing up, and in the course of my life, that, that's all we ever knew. You know, we never knew color, we never saw it, we never realized that someone was of a different color, that could be a grandmother, could be a grandfather. And it is kind of sad that after all this time, from those days of me growing up and being with family in Virginia, that we're still having these problems, where there is a tremendous amount of fear of diversity, and that's kind of sad. But hopefully, we can move forward, and the fact is that there is a lot of support among trying to get rid of hate, trying to dispose of it. of hate, trying to dispose of it. And that was nice to see around the country, and hopefully that'll continue as we move forward into the future. Because the younger generation, unless they're being taught, they're not going to see color either. It's about how they live and the pursuit of happiness, and trying to make their lives and their future worthwhile. And so, hopefully, we'll see that in the future. On another note, recently, we just had our CSEA Conference, which was in Las Vegas. We had many, many business issues to debate, discuss, and be able to conduct business on a very vigorous schedule. Even though we were in Las Vegas, our days started eight o'clock in the morning and went to 10 o'clock at night, simply because that's what we had to do. We were there to work, and so we did so. And so, hopefully, it will benefit our members in the future, and for CSEA has a bright future, because we are committed to remaining strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, and thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I know it's been a long day for most of you. Appreciate you being here, and we'll see you. Have a great kickoff to the semester, and we'll see you again next month. Thanks.